All right. Well, hello. I'm Pat Rice, editor of the News Journal. And over the last, the last two weeks of August, I moderated a total of five debates between candidates for various political offices in Volusia and Flagler counties. Those debates included two of the Volusia County Council races that voters will consider in the upcoming August 28th primary. But we were unable to get the candidates for Volusia County Council District Five to debate, mainly because one of the candidates, Fred Lowery, the incumbent, said he could not find an acceptable day to debate due to an illness in his family. Earlier this week, after he attended a county council meeting, Mr. Lowery again made it clear that he does not wish to participate in a debate in advance of the August 28th primary. However, the other qualified candidate in the District Five race, Dan Hunt, expressed a desire to have the News Journal ask him the questions he would have been asked had he taken part in the debate. So today is an opportunity for Mr. Hunt to answer our questions. So that's what we're doing today in the second floor conference room of the News Journal. Before we get started, I'd like to make a brief introduction. Dan Hunt has lived in DeBury since 1972, and he's a graduate of DeLand High School. He's a licensed electrician and the business manager for Electricians Union Local 756. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
He's a board member of Volusia County Flagler Career Source, and he was a, has been, or was, a Little League umpire-
Still is.
-for more than a decade, and still is. And he also served on the DeBury City Council. Dan, glad to have you here. And let's get straight to our questions, which, to make clear, we have not discussed prior to us sitting down here.
And for the record, I did ask you for them.
Okay.
And he said no.
All right.
Good job, Pat.
So, so first question. Volusia County's treasured springs on the west side are in trouble. Nearly everyone seems to agree on that. The state has prepared a plan for reducing nitrogen and other pollutants into our springs, and nearly everyone has challenged that plan as inadequate. So those springs, by large measure, are in District Five. They're on the west side. How should Volusia County get involved in ensuring that those fragile springs are protected?
Now, when you say springs, I'm assuming you're talking about Blue Springs, Gemini Springs, and all the... Well, I mean, it appeared, this came up only when I was on the city council member, and this has been an ongoing thing. I'm thinking more of Gemini Springs, obviously, is, is in the city of DeBury. I think a lot of folks in Volusia County might not even be aware that it's over there, but the folks in the southwest Volusia are. And, you know, you get into these federal issues, and we actually had a friend in Representative Mica, who, who was, you know, seemed to always be going ahead and in the right direction with that, but like you said, it would run into these hurdles, and it always came, it got down to a blame game. Well, who caused it? And that, I heard that a lot. Well, who caused it? Quite frankly, who cares? Problem's a problem, let's fix it. I heard stuff that, you know, the, the building of I-4 caused the Gemini... I'm speaking of Gemini Springs right now. I know you're asking me a blanket question, and I'm sure it's going to involve Blue Springs, which I've spent my, the finish to Gemini, thought, I mean, was it the building of I-4? And I've heard that there, and I'm like, wow, that, that interstate's been there for a long time. I mean, is that the excuse we're going to use? Let's fix it. Whatever needs to be done, needs to be done. Now, it's going to be expensive, there's no doubt about it, and it, there, there's, from what I understand, there's federal monies that can be utilized for this. So your question to me is, what, what can Volusia County do? What can the council members do? Well, put pressure to our representatives. We're going to, we're going to have some new ones, maybe some existing ones. We got, we got congressmen. Of course, we got two senators for the state of Florida. And then, if, if it's not all federal, because I know sometimes it's, you're talking federal, and they say, oh, no, no, that state. Well, we got congressmen, we got legislators in Tallahassee, too. We have to push it. I mean, to just say, yeah, we got a problem here, not do anything. If I'm sitting as a county council member, I'm going to have some stroke. Get on the phone, call the, call the representatives in these jurisdictions, say, we got an issue here, I want to talk to you about this. And now, what can we, and, and that's, that's provided that, like, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about state monies and involvement in federal, and then, of course, if there's county money, well, I'll be sitting on the council. I mean, that's where, you know, you've got to bring these things up. A lot of times, it's, it's, well, nothing gets done about whatever it may be in life. It's like, well, did you even talk about it?
Sure. Let me, let me go to one question that's related to it, because the springs, what they've found is higher than there should be levels of nitrates, especially nitrogen. And as you know, in Deltona, septic is, a, a, a large number of homes are, are on septic systems. They're older septic systems. I think that if, that scientific evidence has indicated that those septic systems, that nitrogen leaks from there, and then it leaches in the direction of the springs, or of the St. Johns. What, what steps should be taken to fix the, those septic systems? And should, I know this isn't just a county issue, it's a state issue, it's a federal issue, but should homeowners there be forced on the sewer if it's available? And what, what needs to happen to, you know, to kind of negotiate, mitigate through all that?
Well, first off, I like the word you use, scientific, because that's where I lean. I'm not anti-science, make that clear. Politicians who don't want to look at science, and, you know, we got our cellphone, that's scientific, we're okay with that, we accept that. I'm not holding on my hand, I'm acting like I am, but, sitting over there, but, but yet, when it comes to a scientist telling us, hey, this is happening, and this is causing, we're like, oh, no, no, the jury's still out on that. No, the jury's not out. I do respect science. Now, the question about, and you're, you're moving to, let me just make a little comment, which, first off, I grew up in the city of DeBury, and there are a bunch of houses that have septic in DeBury. Per capita, percentage-wise, considerably more than Deltona. My understanding, and I don't have the exact facts on this, a large percentage of the Deltona residents don't have septic. And I could be, I don't know the exact numbers on that-
Sure.
-because with this, from the city's inception, when it was a town, they, they did, they, they had, they had sewer systems, you know, somewhat, you know? And I know there's a lot. There are septic tanks in Deltona, I'm not saying there isn't. Now, you're alluding to the ever-popular, or, of, topic of forced sewer. And that's a big issue in Deltona, politicians are saying, no forced sewer. Having, having a homeowner pay for something, it's going to be astronomical. I have no idea what it would cost to have somebody, but, but you've got to figure it's going to be a lot. I don't know, any blue collar worker in the city of Deltona, DeBury, or anywhere, they can pull that out of their back pocket. So if, if it ever came to that, we'd have to mitigate it somehow, some way. Just asking someone, hey, we need $50,000 for you to do this. Whether their house might only be worth $100,000, just say the heck with it, I'll just let the house go into foreclosure or something. I mean, I could see someone saying that-
Sure.
-if they were put in that position. So I would never advocate for forced sewer. Never. I just don't know how that would make any sense. Now, getting back to the science, if we're talking about, do we need to do this? Now, the people who install septic tanks, they might be able to tell us, hey, we got all new technology now, it's not the same way. But I know the septic tanks that were put in the city of DeBury years ago, when my family first moved there and all, they're, it's the same septic tank. I, it, it's not been pulled up and replaced, you know, it's been, so I got to figure that it's nineteen, it's early seventies technology. So it, it may actually happen to that. So if, and here's another, here's a, here's a side answer to it, going back to the federal government. The federal government came and said, hey, we're going to help. You know? Well, then, go ahead and help, help, help offset the costs of doing this. I'm sure a homeowner might want to hear that, say, okay, you're going to, we're going to have sewage here, but yet I'm not going to have to foot this astronomical bill? You know, I've got another thing about, and I've always thought about this as a tradesman. Whenever you see a Batco or a Tracko digging up a street, or on the side of the street, my question is, what are they putting in the ground? It's not what they're putting in the ground, it's what they're not putting in the ground. Because I'm an electrician by trade, and the electricians and plumbers, any tradesman out there knows what I'm talking about on this. When you dig a ditch, put some other stuff in that ditch. How come we'll tear up a road for one conduit? Why not tear up the road, while we got the, while we got the road blocked, and we got the ditch open, let's open it a little bit wider, let's put some sewage in there, put some stormwater, put some electrical, put a rack of conduits in there, so we can, the next time hurricanes knock down these poles, we'll run the pick cable underground? Now, you keep hearing this million dollars a mile, you hear all these things, and it's, it's, no, 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 it never happens. Why? But there's always a Tracko ripping up a road somewhere, and, and my question is, and I'll be asking this when I get in the county council, well, we're ripping that road up, what else are we putting in the ground while we got the earth open? Maybe, maybe we can save some money there. You can do two things at once. Put one layer of conduit, throw some dirt over it, pack it down, put your phone lines, put your, you know, there, there's things you can do.
Sure.
You never hear that topic. And I don't know if that's sidetracking from your question, I'm not, let me, let me sum it up with this, I'm not for forced sewer. Make that clear. Citizens of Deltona are crazy about that, they're like, they, they don't want, they're not, they're not voting for any politician that's going to make them hook up to sewage, and I am not advocating for that.
Sure.
But if, if the science comes down, they say, we got to, we got to do something here, we need to do something.
All right.
And it's got to be mitigated financially.
Let me, let me get to the next question. And this is an economic development question, and I am kind of front-loading these questions to make them West Volusia questions.
Well, you should.
But-
You can cut me off any time, I do ramble, so I, I, you know that.
All right. Well, we know that now.
You know it now, I'm a politician, I ramble.
So the county, and most of the county's municipalities, give hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to fund Team Volusia. And Team Volusia's job is act as an umbrella organization to bring economic development to Volusia County, the theory being, if they bring it one place, everybody benefits. But what is your assessment of Team Volusia's effectiveness overall? And have West Volusia's cities in District Five, Deltona, DeBury benefited from Team Volusia's efforts?
Okay, I've got some history with Team Volusia, and I'm going to be honest and say, I've been, and I hate to say this, but I've been on both sides of the fence and statements I've made, and I'm going to own both of them, and I'm going to, I'm going to clarify this. I was a city council member in DeBury when we, we, we jumped on the Team Volusia bandwagon. And I've got, I don't know if bandwagon's the right term, but when the city of DeBury got involved with Team Volusia, then, then county councilwoman Patrick Nordy, who, who's served the fifth district of Volusia County very well, she come down, spoke with us, and the citizens, and of course, the council and stuff, and, and advocated that this would be a good move. I voted for, I voted, I'm on record of voting as a city council member of DeBury, to, to pay into the Team Volusia. And a lot of, and let me just say, a lot of the reason is, if it's Team Volusia in its name itself, and we are part of Volusia, I'm a team player, so it would be disingenuous of me, as not only a citizen, but definitely as a, as a council member, to say, okay, Daytona, Warham, and you guys all pay for it, but DeBury won't. So, you know, that's, that's that. Now, in that same breath, if we jump in there, I want DeBury, Deltona, to be on the radar. It's not just southwest Volusia throws some coin in there, but east Volusia gets all the money. And I'm not saying that's happening, but I'm just saying that as a statement. Because that's a statement that has been said. Now, do I see any value in it? Of course I see value in it. I mean, anytime you're, you know, the, the, the concept is, is, is you've got to have this, if I'm getting the concept properly worded, you have this group that's, that's, their sole purpose is economic development, is the term you use, you know, that, how do we get companies to, to say, listen, here's an area right here, let's invest in it, what do we need to do? And normally, you would think, well, isn't that what the government itself should do? But in, to a certain degree, they should. There's people that work inside the government-
Because the county has its own economic development-
Well, exactly. And we, that was the argument that was made in the city of DeBury, you know, the citizens were like, maybe we got a city manager, we got assistants, we got all these people on staff, what are y'all doing? And so, you know, you've got to kind of work, work through that a little bit, and then I asked that question, too, well, why are we hiring another group? And do I see some value in it? I'm going to be, that's a, part of the question you asked me, is, do I see any value in it? I'm going to tell you my, my position, how I saw, how I have seen it in the city of DeBury. I haven't seen enough value in it. That's, that's how I see. And the perfect example is our TOD area, which stands for the Transit Oriented Development, which is next to train stations. And I used to be kind of really up on it while I was on the council, so forgive me if I don't have all the inside scoop on it now. But there's nothing that's happened south of Dirksen Road in DeBury, and I think you're very aware of the area I'm speaking of. And so, is there something right there where Team Volusia could have jumped in there? I have to say, yeah. Yes. And I also know the city of DeBury is also hired, has on staff now, and has for a few years, after I left office, I don't know what his title is, I know his, his name, his last name's real tricky to say, he's one of the developers in DeBury, to be like the, the director of that. And nothing's happened. So I would ask, I will ask this question when I get to the county council, if the citizens allow me to be there. I want to look at Team Volusia, I don't want to throw it out. The other day, matter of fact, Dustin did an interview with me, and he asked me a question about Team Volusia. I kind of threw Team Volusia under the bus a little bit. So this is where I've been on both sides of it. And after that went into paper, I had a businessman in, in South Daytona who sits on the board with that, calling me up, and said, hey, Dan, if you get elected, let's talk a little bit more about this. This is not, there's, there's a lot more going on here than you might think. So I want to listen to it. Of course, I got to get elected, and I want to hear it. But I got to tell you something, if it's not working, we either won't fix it, or I'm going to advocate to get rid of it.
You mentioned the train station in DeBury, Sunrail. So Sunrail in Volusia County, when you look at it, it, it gets to DeBury and then it ends, and it seems to feel like beyond that, all the planning is kind of a mess. It doesn't appear it's going to be extended as far as DeLand. It's not clear whether the county will still be on the hook to pay as much money for Sunrail if that doesn't happen. And I think that's what the current obligation is. So, and on top of that, although I think DeBury's ridership has been pretty good-
Phenomenal. They've extended the parking lot to accommodate the parking.
Right. But overall, ridership has never hit its goals. So what, what does the county need to do regarding Sunrail?
First off, I'm a fan of Sunrail. And I'll say that, whether it hurts me or helps me, because that's, that's where I'm at. You know, if I can make a comment about trains, they've been around for a long time, before the automobile, and they work. The rest of the planet has been using trains, the rest of the planet has been using trains high speed and all that, in some of the bigger cities, Frank, in France, in Japan, in Europe, and all, and having quite a lot of success with it. Our bigger cities now, and I'm going, I'm moving over to Sunrail, but I'll do this backstory. Our bigger cities have used trains quite well, New York, Chicago, Philadelphia, and all. So we know they work. It's just a matter of, of, of getting it together. Now, getting back to our, our little slice of heaven here in southwest Volusia, which I'm, I'm glad Sunrail's there. Is it going to go to DeLand? It should, but at the same time, let's talk about that. I mean, is it going to DeLand because there's already a train track there? That's kind of, probably makes sense of the thought process, right? Why not, why not have that, and this is going to cost some money, so you're going to ask me that question following it, why not have that thing turn a little to the east and get on over to Deltona, where quite frankly, also needs to go? You know, it's cruising up northwest, and it were 472 meets 1792 in north of Orange City, south of DeLand. What if that thing trucked and turned, made a right-hand turn, and started heading over there, and started taking some of that, tens of thousands of citizens in Deltona that fight I-4 every day? The reason why I love the trains, and I'll say that, every time I'm stuck in traffic of I-4, I get mad at Rick Scott, because he stopped the high-speed rail. And he did. It's ain't about Rick Scott, but now he's running for senator, and he's all about high-speed rail.
So, so getting back to the county, though, the county has a seat at the Sunrail table. What does the county need, need to do to, to, if, if Sunrail is, is good for this county, what does the county need to do to make sure they're getting their money's worth collectively?
Well, you best, basically said it, if you're at the seat and you're not, if you're at the table and you're not, you're not speaking up, I mean, if that's the issue, I don't know if that is the issue. You know, I'm assuming that there's a county council member that's appointed to be on that seat, that probably would come from the county manager, or maybe the chair of the county, I don't know who would appoint that person, but that would be a good question to ask. I don't know the answer to that, why aren't they getting enough? But I could tell you, if, you know, if I got appointed to that seat, they'd know Dan Hunt was in the room. Bottom line. I mean, if, if Seminole, Orange, Osceola, and every other county that this thing is touching, or is going to touch, you know those folks speak up.
Yeah.
They, they get their, they get their piece of the pie. So I'm not just going to show up there for lunch and a cup of coffee, you know, hey, what about Bush County? You know? And, and, and go back to the city of DeBury, and this, you know, the, the, Sunrail, I mean, is it a, is it a commuter rail, is it, you know, it's, I think it could be a little bit of everything. You know, given people, and I'm going to, I'm going to swing back and take a shot, maybe at the, the lack of development down there is, we're not giving people a, a reason, a good enough reason to get on a train, maybe on the weekend, which the train doesn't run, it's another topic, to come up to our lovely city of DeBury, and southwest Volusia to see Blue Springs, and, and Gemini Springs, and, and Gemini Springs Park, and things like that. Because when you, when you get off that train right there, you see weeds.
Right, there's, it's a parking lot-
Right. So Joe, Joe, Joe Weekend Warrior in, in Winter Park's not getting on the train to go up to look at weeds. Now, if there was something going on up there, maybe he or she would. And I, and that's just using the, the train as a, as, for entertainment purposes. Which quite frankly, when I, when I just took, when I just threw in the high-speed rail, which, if the Sun, if the Sunrail got us to the center of the state, Orlando, and then we jumped on a high-speed rail, which probably is going to happen now, we can get down to Tampa in, you know, minutes flat, hour, you know, comparatively. And maybe go down there and watch a Sunray game.
Sure.
Maybe go down there and watch a concert at the, at the Saint, the Saint Pete Times Forum. But you know what, now, you pick, you, what used to be an hour and a half, two-hour ride, is a four-hour trek of misery on Interstate Four. We need these trains, and I'm, I'm on board with them.
Okay. Um, I'm going to jump to kind of a more general county issue. Jim Denine has resigned as county manager, he resigned in June, and the county council is in the beginning stages of finding a replacement for him. Mr. Denine had his supporters, he had his critics. What is your assessment of Mr. Denine's time as county manager, and what qualities do you think the next county manager needs to bring to that position?
Well, I think, let me say this, what I, what I can, from the outside looking in, and, you know, because I'm not, you know, there's, there's always going to be another side to this story, even the citizens aren't going to know, because they're, you know, they're not in the inner mechanics of the, of the operations in county, which is understandable. There's no doubt, I mean, I have to assume that he was, he was competent, knew what he was doing, I'm not going to take a shot at him there, he's definitely, I know one thing, he sure knows how to run a council, because that's what he did. That, I, that I saw firsthand, and that's not a mystery to anybody who's been paying attention, this council, past councils, whatever, it was, it was Jim Denine running the show. Which maybe that's flattering, man, not flattering, maybe that's appealing to some citizens, they like, but, you know, the county council itself needs to give some direction to the county manager. I would argue that that position, he or she works at the pleasure of the county council members, there's seven of them. So that being said, now, as far as Jim Denine personally, I mean, you know, he's obviously was qualified for the job, you know, I don't want to take a shot at him there, I, I think the way this whole thing went down with him leaving, I was there that day when, quite frankly, my opponent, quickly, Mr. Fred Lowery, gave the second, the motion first by Joyce Cusack, second by Fred Lowery, to give him a nice golden parachute on the way out the door, which I've heard the numbers was $400, $5,000, I don't know how much money he took with him, some of that he had rightfully coming, because it was under contract. I understand that. I'm a union guy, contracts, contract, pay him what he's owed, but there was one person on that council that wanted to fire him. Of course, she didn't get to, she didn't get her hand up fast enough, but, but I know I'm sidetracking there, but as far, as far as Jim Denine, I got a problem with him-
And what I'm more interested in is the qualities of the next county manager to come in.
Well, first off, the county manager that either this sitting county hires, or if I'm in there, first off, they've got to be able to, to run a county. And there's where I'm going to give some props to Jim Denine, there's no doubt he knew how to run a county. These folks are, are trained in this, they're educated in this, they have a lot of, so that's where you've got to look there, obviously. Maybe a little more humility, though. Maybe somebody who's like, you know, like, as from my observation, from the outside looking in, he was, I don't want to use the word tyrant, but it's the first word that came to my mind, it's like he was running it, you know, a bully pulpit type of show there. I don't think that's how it should work. And if, even if it's not, even if it wasn't run that way, it was perceived to be run that way.
Sure.
So perception becomes reality. So I would, if I'm a part of the hiring process, the person's got to be qualified, obviously, you know, to do the things that need to be done, and then the person, the individual has to not only work with, but want to work with elected officials. Now, knowing this, let me just make this comment, people that are elected, really for the most part, are just regular citizens. Myself included. I've got some knowledge, I've got some background, but I don't have, I'm not a part of running a county government, I'm not going to pretend that I am.
Sure.
So I will yield to the professionals in that matter, they know what they're doing. I want to hear what they got to say, I want to hear both sides of it and all that. You just, that's the type of individual we need. And then, that way you can somewhat have some consensus. If you've got all the county council, at least, oaring in the right direct, same direction, or at least if they're button heads a little bit, there, there's a middle ground somewhere, and it's not like, well, this is what the county manager wants, this is it, I'm not looking for that, I don't think the citizens are looking for that.
Let me ask you another question about county government structure. And this is a question that's actually part of a constitutional amendment that's on, going to be on the general election ballot in November. And it has to do with whether the county's constitutional officers, that'd be the sheriff, property appraiser, I believe the county clerk, whether they should be given budget autonomy from the county manager's office. Right now, they don't have that, according to the county's charter. Do you think that they should have that autonomy?
My understanding about this is that Volusia County, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, you know the answer to this, is one of maybe three or four counties, out of the 67 counties in the state of Florida that is set up the way we are. And so it gets, gets back to the old proverbial home rule, the autonomy of, of, my understanding, now, I've listened to, the person that speaks the loudest about this is Sheriff Chipwood, who, who, who has been quoted as saying, somewhat quoted, I don't, I don't want to misquote him, you know, he feels like his hands are tied a wee bit, so. First off, I don't want to tie, I don't want to be tying the hands of the sheriff, you know, if there's something that he or she needs, if he needs, I want to hear about it. You know, and I, I think that the citizens, and for the record, I like Sheriff Chipwood, I think he's doing a good job. But my understanding about what he is advocating for, and I'm, I'm singling him out, because I haven't heard the other offices speak of it, I don't know their feelings about it. And I don't know the whole inner mechanisms of what the ramifications are. Do we give this up? Obviously, it's working for like 62 or 63 other counties, it's not a big deal. So would it be something Volusia County would look into, would be giving up our time? Now, you talk about budgets, my understanding is, even with the constitutional position that Sheriff Chipwood is advocating for, and is going to be on this amendment, it will not forfeit Volusia County's authority to set a budget. But, but what it may do, it may allow a constitutional officer, if there, if he or she's not satisfied with that, and the best example I can say is, hey, I need 100 million, the county says, no, we're only giving you 90 million. Well, that's it, right now, it's a slam, done. If he's a constitutional officer, he could lobby at a high, he could kind of jump over the county council, maybe, and, and lobby the, the legislature or the governor. That's part of what I, that may not be the only reason, but that's my understanding of it, there's probably some other mechanism, smaller parts of it that I'm not in tune with, but, but I really want to hear more about that. Last thing I wanna do, and I'll make this clear, so I don't wanna put, especially with the sheriff's department, I, I don't wanna put handcuffs.
Sure.
Well, to, 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 no pun intended, especially, let me just make this comment, the sheriff department, one hundred percent. Of the fifth district of Volusia County that I'm running for, is policed by the Volusia County Sheriff, there's no cops here, there's no local cops over there. I have not been endorsed by Sheriff Chipwood, I've asked for his endorsement, he sat this one out, but he's on the record of not wanting Fred Lowery to be in there. I didn't say that, he said it, you know, he was on the uh, Mark Bernier Show and said it.
Sure.
And he gave me a little, he said, good luck, Dan, he goes, I think you'll do well, he gave me this little uh. Sheriff coin here, which I've been carrying around with me, but um.
I see.
And you know, I'll be honest with you, I think Sheriff Chipwood wants me to win, he just kinda staying neutral.
Well, let me, let me ask, just follow up with a question regarding Sheriff Chipwood. And I ask this, uh, in the same vein, that I'm, I'm not asking, cause I oppose the sheriff, I'm the editor of the paper and I'm supposed to ask questions.
Lay it on me.
So Sheriff Chipwood has a less than positive relationship with the current council. Uh, he had a much less than positive relationship with uh, former county manager Jim Denine. He said all current council members up for reelection should be defeated. He's made a number of unflattering comments about the, the council members. Uh, uh, I think he uh, at one point, he's suggested that this county needs an anima. Uh, he's suggested a need for a state or federal criminal investigation. Uh, what do you make of the sheriff's relationship with the council? And how would you reestablish that relationship if you were on the council?
Well, I just said it a few minutes ago. I think Sheriff Chipwood's beef was with the county manager. And because from my observation, and many citizens of Volusia County, the county manager ran the show. So thereby association, his beef is with the county council, because in his mind, I'm not, I don't wanna speak for him, this is my observation. This is what I'm thinking, that I'm perceiving here, is that he's got a beef with the county manager, then Jim Denine. He's not counting on the county council members to stand up and, and, and buck Jim Denine in any way, so therefore by connections, like you know what, you're all no good. Now, as far as Sheriff Chipwood, um, nobody's gonna accuse him of not saying the wrong thing. And I said this to him with all due respect in his office, I said, well, it's one thing you and I have in common sheriff, we both put our foot in our mouth, we can eat chocolate, I chuckle, whatever. I'm gonna say some crazy things too, um, but I'm gonna say something in his defense, he won in a primary with five people running. So, who cares what the elected official, the citizens of Volusia County said, we want Sheriff Chipwood to be our sheriff, that's clear. He smoked him in the primary, that's unheard of, what he did. So, he's got that, now, these remarks he's made, and he's made some crazy off the wall things, and um, you know, uh, you know. What can I say, you know, and I, 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 I hope I don't make uh, uh, statements like, you know, but I'm going to, but um. You know, I, I, I think he's a good sheriff, and, and I think we, we get a new council in there. We get the type of county manager that we just discussed a few minutes ago, I think this relationship between the county and Sheriff Chipwood. Starts to get better and works its way out. And I, and I don't, I don't think he's looking for a, a three or four year fight with the county, he's got business to take care of, as a sheriff of Volusia County, he, he's not. He's, he's a lot more savvy, a lot more uh, of a leader than that, this is just a fight for today.
Let me, let me go on to one other uh, issue that, that uh, relates to the county and uh, to the county council's. Uh, performance, and also I think to the county manager's performance. Uh, earlier this year, the county council dismissed the notion of increasing impact fees more than one time. The first time was uh, after about a one hour discussion at a February meeting, the fees haven't been increased since two thousand and three. Now, eventually the county decided to hire a firm to study whether impact fees should be increased. But it turns out that that same firm had already given the county a preliminary report back in two thousand and sixteen. In which they recommended dramatically increasing impact fees. For whatever reason, that report was never brought up during all of these more recent uh, discussions. Uh, so what?
And didn't they go hire the same company again, is there more to that story?
Uh, yes, they have hired the same company, uh, uh, and they're now doing a more complete study. But what should the council do regarding impact fees now?
I'm gonna answer that, but I gotta make a comment I thought of. This, 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 and I, I dealt with this when I was in the city of DeBarry. Whenever you hire outside groups to evaluate something, it just burns the citizens to the core. They're, because they see that as on a, a complete waste. Joe, Joe Sixpack is like, what are you doing spending millions of dollars and bringing some to tell us what we already know? That being said, I do understand why governments do that, because you, you gotta, you gotta get a, an unbiased opinion and stuff like that. Now, the question about impacts, that's where you're rolling with this, now, if we had a professional group, tell us to increase it. We didn't, and as you just stated, the report was buried, maybe intentionally, maybe accident, but who knows why. Then the question comes back up, I mean, what are impact fees, it's, the word itself is, what is the impact of what you're getting ready to do gonna be? In the, in the present and, and the near and the foreseeable future. So, why shouldn't developers and individuals pay for it? Now, I'm, I'm a, I'm a, I'm, I'm a fan of spreading the pain too, when it comes to, to taxes. I've been on record doing that in the city of DeBarry, and I'm, I'm gonna use that as an example. The lovely uh, HOA community of DeBarry Golf and Country Club, now I don't know exactly what year that was built. But uh, uh, it was on seventeen ninety-two in DeBarry and has been a, was a flooding nightmare. So what happened years ago when it started to be, and then, keep in mind, back then. At most, all of the government stuff that happened in DeBarry was done via the county and, and inspections and permitting and things of that nature. Developer came in there, built a community, and what I remember as a kid is, is there's lakes out there, we used to ride dirt bikes and swim out there. In a complete flood zone, didn't prepare for it, and then took their check and boogied. And now these citizens that bought these houses, they're on the hook, so when we, the city of DeBarry had to go take major loans, and the millions of dollars. And I, when I was campaigning back then, I even said, listen, people, some citizens of DeBarry said, why are we paying for DeBarry Golf and Country Club? I said, it's not those people's fault, they were sold a bill of goods, they came here and bought a house, nice houses, they brought up the value of all of our houses in DeBarry. These forty, fifty thousand dollar houses you're living in now, are now going for a hundred and fifty, so let's be, let's be honest here, so I, I love that part. But they were, they were, they built this community in a sinkhole for so, you know, for, for lack of a better term. Now, if we'd had some regulation on the front end, some impact fees, some accountability. Maybe the city of DeBarry wouldn't have been on the hook for tens of million dollars later, but to put the infrastructure, which I was for. Now, there's where I'm talking about spreading the pain, so now leading back, am I for increasing impact fees? Yes, if the study says yes, let's do it, let's do it in a responsible way. But, but if you're gonna come in somewhere, knock down some trees and stuff, there's infrastructure, it's gotta be done, the people making the investment, let them get on the hook first.
So, so let's talk a little bit about uh, uh. Uh, investment and how to pay for things, because impact fees, even if they're tripled, quadrupled. Uh, they can only pay for certain things, and they certainly can't pay for all the infrastructure needs. So, Volusia County was poised to place a half cent sales tax in the November ballot. That if passed, would have brought in more than forty million a year for roads, drainage, other infrastructure needs. Uh, one of the good things about it also, uh, uh, just. Speaking objectively, is that you could use that money for bonding then, so you could use that money for, you could start larger projects. With the notion that that would pay for it, because it was a twenty year.
Money in the bank, so to speak, correct?
So, it wasn't placed on the ballot in the wake of the reaction to the council not raising impact fees.
Who took it off the ballot, if you don't mind?
Uh, well, I think that uh, what happened is the League of Cities went to them and said, don't put this on the ballot.
Yeah.
Uh, and the reason that they did that is because they were getting uh, a, I think a strong vibe. That it wasn't gonna pass because of the county's actions on impact fees. I'm, that, that is just my interpretation of things, but I know they went and then the county decided not to place it on the ballot, the county council. But the need for infrastructure still exists. So, should that half cent sales tax be reconsidered by voters a year from now, two years from now? Uh, as uh, if you were on the council, is that something that you would advocate for?
Well, and, and, and right now, as I'm sitting here right now, the short answer is yes, put it on the ballot, but let me elaborate a little bit. And it's interesting, and thank you for allowing me to ask you a question, um, when I, you're just, you're very kind, you're very. Um, um, you know, so the League of Cities, which I'm familiar with who they are, when I was on DeBarry City Council, I, I went to those meetings and.
I think it's the uh, mayor's roundtable.
The mayor, right, so, so, and this is so interesting, I almost have to chuckle, because in some cases, people get scared. Politicians get scared and don't wanna make a decision, say, oh, well, put it on a, put it on a referendum, put it on the ballot, let the people do it, that way I don't gotta touch it. Well, in this case, they had the opportunity to do just that, and then they got scared again, and said, oh, hmm, we're getting some bad vibes, the people aren't gonna like it. So, what do you, it's kinda condescending of the people a little bit, treating them in a condescending manner, I should say. You know, if, if, if this was, this whole thing about infrastructure, and, and, and I have no problem saying this. You, you, and I don't wanna use pay to play, that's the first word that comes to my mind, you've gotta pay for things, man. I mean, the roads are constantly, you know, infrastructure, you know, the, the, what the citizens really want is they wanna know that it's spent wisely. That's what, if you ask anybody, if you get them in a mob, they may say, no taxes, no taxes, no taxes, but if you get them one on one and say, well. What's the real problem, they say, then they'll give you examples, they'll say, well, they spent all this money on this, it's been, they want the money spent wisely. If you could make an argument, a case, that hey, let's increase this money, and here's where it's gonna go, and um. And I, and I have to give, I don't know, I have to give a county council member some credit, who said this the other night in a debate. I don't wanna say his name, because I might very well be endorsing him if I do that, and I'm not trying to do that, he talked about how monies are, they're allotted for things. And a lot of citizens don't know that, they think tax money goes into a slush fund.
Right.
They just do, and I've thought that for years too, when you say, here's a half cent tax, then you also say, well, here's where it's gonna go. Meaning it can't go over here, it must go here.
Sure.
This is the line on it, now, I know that sounds simple, maybe for you and I sitting here, but for Joe, Joe Citizen doesn't see it that way. They see another coin coming out of their pocket, going into a bucket, and everybody in the, in the government reaching in and grabbing it, that's how they see it. So we gotta make sure we educate them and say, here's where it's going, and then that's where we gotta put it, and we gotta give them updates. Say, here's what we're doing with your money now, and Volusia County actually is pretty good about that, I have to give credit on that. Like sometimes when you see something done with an echo grant or something like that, you'll see a, a plaque there saying, this money has come from this. So the citizens that take the time to read that, will say, okay, you know, money well spent.
You know, let me ask a question about that, because this is something that um, that I wonder about myself. But, you know, Volusia County management in recent years has pointed innumerable times to fiscal restraint as one of their strengths. Uh, they can claim zero growth, or uh, zero uh, debt right now. Uh, and that's something that I think uh, is, and, you know, that's a, that's a claim, a valid claim to make. But at the same time, over the last five years, county's operating budget expenditures have grown by a hundred and fifteen point five million dollars. That's nearly twenty percent. So, is, I guess the question I get when I look at that is um, just as a person operating in a business, it really has to watch our. Nickels and dimes, is, is the county as fiscally conservative as it needs to be?
Well, right when you said fiscal restraint, I gotta tell you what came to my mind. Growing up, my, my parents, my dad, my parents, they're retired, they live in DeBarry. They're, they're eighty and seventy-nine years old, my dad would, and he still does to this day. Turn off the swimming pool pump, turn off the, turn the air, you know, up and all that stuff. Quite frankly, I've started doing that myself, um, and he was being fiscally restraining, but my mom would say to him. My dad's name is Pat, 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 now I gotta spend a bunch of money on chlorine because the pool's turning green. So there's, there's a, I don't know if that's going down the slide, but being fiscally restrained and bragging about it. On the, on this little here, where you could show a number saying, look, look, look at the money we're not spending, but over here, you're having to spend a fortune. You just implied that it's increased here, while we can say we're fiscally conservative over here, but yet we're having to spend all some money over here, well, are you really being fiscally conservative? And I always remember that, the air conditioner, and then my mom would say, hey, you're, the house is gonna turn into mildew if you don't turn the air on. Those are some of the examples that I've had, now.
We'll, we'll come back to one of those examples, cause I've got, I've got one.
I don't know if I answered your question, but the, 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 it gets back to, is, what I said a couple minutes ago, are we spending the money wisely? And let's not try to do a, a, a bait and switch or nothing like that, let's call it like it is.
So I, I wanna come back to one thing on that, and we are sort of, believe it or not, uh, we're, uh, we're running out of time, so let me get to.
I told you to shut me up, I talk a lot.
Yeah, well, you know, I want you to talk a lot, so uh, uh, so uh, here's a question, and uh, you know. A news journal story, a couple, three weeks ago, showed the extent of donations people connected to the development industry have made to county. Council candidates this election cycle. Uh, so first, you know, have you received any financial support from people in the development industry? And do you think developers have too much influence in Volusia County?
The first part of your question is, no, I haven't received any from developers, and in all honesty, I've not asked them for any money. Um, I have received, I'm somewhere around just a little shy of eighteen thousand dollars I've raised, seventeen thousand some. Some, some from private citizens and primarily from, I've, I've reached out to my fellow union affiliates that I'm, I'm with. I'm just talking about myself, cause it's out there, I have no problem hiding this, and as I think I've said to you and I maybe said to Dustin in an interview, so it's been written. Um, the people that donated to my campaign are all working class people, they're, for the most part, are all blue collar people. Either directly or indirectly through their, their voluntary check off through PAC funds through the unions. So they have chosen me, a person that they feel will represent the working class, to be on the county council. And I proudly take that money and, and, and want to represent them, cause that's where, that's my campaign, that's my platform. Now, do I think that big business has too much, um, I don't know the word to use, but influence, stroke, whatever. Um, let me say this too first, let me qualify this, I'm not anti-big business, I'm not anti-business. Sometimes a labor guy gets pigeonholed into that thing, we need labor and management. Matter of fact, I just successfully negotiated a contract at my local union, uh, with the, the local electrical contractors we're affiliated with. For a three year contract, we got a raise for our members, and the contractors are very happy with it, we sat there, took about three or four months to come to this. And it was ratified August eighth, we have labor's interests, and we have management's interest. The same thing could be said about developers, building uh, hard rock hotels and, and whatever they wanna do. And the taxpayers who are actually footing some of the bill, like giving them beach and things like that, so. There, you need both, you need both, so do I think they have too much influence? They only have as much influence as you're gonna let them have.
Sure.
Now, if they wanna come to the table, and they wanna make promises of, give us this, give us that, I'm fine for a public-private stuff, I'm not against that.
Sure.
I recognize the value in that, but at the same time, it's not all give, you know, giving everything to you guys, we want something in return.
Issue is balanced.
It's gotta be balanced, so my, my, my eyes and ears are always gonna be open to that, I'm not slamming the door on any developer who's gonna come in front of county council.
Right, and.
But they're gonna know, that Dan Hunt's gonna be saying, well, what's the impact on the workers in this county, and, and what's the payoff for them? Aside from us cutting you a, a, a check from their taxes.
Sure, so a related question, because you are a, a manager for a union, do unions have too much influence?
I don't, I don't think so, do, do you see the percentage of what we actually represent?
But, but within Volusia County, for example, there's a deputies' union.
Okay, which by the way, I'm endorsed by then.
Right, so my question again, I, I mean, uh, will, uh, uh, I guess the question would be. Uh, if you're, if you become a county council member, do you feel beholden to the unions?
No, and I've told them that, and, and, and this is, uh, I be- I believe that labor should have a voice. I believe that any, using a business example, any business person out there does not go into any agreement. Any, any endeavor without some type of contract, they'd be fools to do it. In the construction industry, whatever, there's a written document, okay, now I'm, I'm gonna get to your question, I know where you're going with this, now.
That's, it's really a bond there already.
The terms and conditions of a contract, and that's all it is, now, as a county council member, I know we'll be dealing with the, the deputies. And there's firefighters, and there's, there's, there's unions that are represented, I think it's great that they have a seat at the table. And by the way, Volusia County Schools, which is not under the county council, it's under the school board, but indirect, it's still part of the county. They're in contract negotiations right now, just imagine if they didn't have representation, so they would ju- the teachers and the staff would get whatever was handed to them. So now they have a, when it's done, you can shake hands and say, okay, we got a contract, like I just spoke, just signed a contract with, with electrical contractors. In Volusia County that we're affiliated with, we got a three year contract, we're, we, we, both sides know now, exactly what to expect for the next three years.
Sure.
I think it's very harmonious.
Okay, so uh, uh, I wanna get to a couple more questions.
Please.
So, uh, speaking of harmony.
There we go.
The county's relationship with its cities, and you, you were on the DeBarry City Council.
Yeah.
So the county's relationship with its cities has not always been positive. Uh, more than one city official has told me personally, they think the county is a neighborhood bully. Uh, what, I don't know what your experience is with that, but what do you think could be done to improve the relationship between the counties and its cities?
You mentioned the League of Cities a little while ago.
Yeah, and when I said that, I meant the mayor's roundtable.
No, well, that's okay, that's okay, that's okay. I remember when I was on the DeBarry City Council, and I have no idea why this was happening. County council members were not attending the League of Cities dinners that we would have in the meetings, it's basically a function, it would be a meeting and all that, you know, and. And, and they were, and that was, you know, that's been eight years ago, when was I in the county, I was in there for two thousand and ten, two thousand uh, fourteen, fifteen. Um, so there was, there was that going on then, are they bullies? No, but I'm gonna go back to Jim Denine, it's still the leadership, the captain of the ship of this county has been, for all intents and purposes, somewhat of a bully. That's probably where it comes from, we need to have har- harmonious relationship between the biggest government in Volusia County, which is the county council. And the county itself, and the, correct me if I'm wrong, is there seventeen municipalities, I don't wanna mess that up.
I think it's eighteen.
Eighteen, so there's gotta be some, 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 some harmony here, using that word again, uh, and. I, I think, I think if there is some problems there, it's, it's fixable, it's definitely fixable, and one of the things I will do. As a county council member, if I am elected for the fifth district, is I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, they're gonna, the, the cities of DeBarry. Enterprise, Osteen, you know, enter, that whole, Deltona, that whole area, don't know who I am. And so if there is an issue, I'm not gonna be able to fix everything, I'm not gonna be able to wave a magic wand and, and satisfy all their requests, I'm not gonna ignore them either. I said, listen, it's, well, you know, we'll, we'll bring this up, so I think that's part of it, and if each county council member does that for the seven jurisdictions. Or the five jurisdictions and the two at large, if there is a problem, it can be fixed.
Yeah, I wanna ask uh, two more questions, uh, one is, um, and I'd like you to take just a minute if you could on each of them.
Excellent.
Uh, the, and uh, the first one, probably you could talk for an hour, so it's a little bit of a challenge, but. Does Volusia County have adequate emergency medical and ambulance service for its citizens right now?
No. No, and, and my understanding, and I'm not the guru know all of, of this, I have done some investigation on it. Um, the standard, for example, and someone might correct me if I'm wrong, is, is three to four on a, on. Um, the standard, for example, and someone might correct me if I'm wrong, is, is three to four on a, on a fire truck, for example. I'm saying three to four, um, and that's not the case. There's always that big question about, uh, transport. Um, and, you know, we have evac, uh, which basically is our ambulances for Volusia County. Not basically, it is our ambulance. I am, my understanding, there are some exceptions that can be exercised and transport is allowed, but it may be a little bit of jumping some hurdles. Um, and I just wanna make a comment about transport. Every time I, I hear that, so citizens that are watching this, whatever. Transport is taking, I'm gonna be very explicit, taking grandma from where she's just fallen down and had a heart attack to the hospital. That's transport.
Yeah.
So Joe Citizen says, get my grandma to the hospital. We don't care about your politics, right?
Right.
Cause if it's your grandma, you're gonna be raised in hell if she's not treated that way. And that's how, the best way I could say it. We're not staffed properly in that. From the, the, the folks that I've checked in with and, and the investigation I've done, we're not. Is, is there, is there, can I, can I, can I be elected and fix it overnight? Probably not, but can, can we move in that direction? Um, yeah. Uh, we, we, if, if, I hear stories of, there's an incident in, 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 in Pond Sinlat or, or Daytona Shores in the closest ambulance at that time, cause you never know. Is, they're all over on the west side of the county right now. So what do we do here? So, and, and then of course the fire truck incident, you know, there's a driver who's an equipment guy. There's, they're, they're all firemen.
Sure.
So if there's a fire, they're putting out a fire. But there's not always a fire though, but there's, there's someone injured at the site. If there's two guys there or two, two firefighters there, not just males, um, you know, are they adequately staffed? From what I, my, my research, my understanding is no, they're not. And I also am hearing that some of the cities, and I think Port Orange is one of them, is trying to just break away and, and, and get their own, get their own game with, with transport and everything.
Do you think this is an example where there, of where there has to be like really clear city and county cooperation to figure this out?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Let me, let me come to a final question. Um, at a Mayor's Roundtable meeting earlier this year, a former county councilman stated that trust in county government has never been lower. Now, some people shook their head and said they agreed and a lot of people were like, that's not true. But, uh, uh, there does seem to be some erosion of trust. And whether that's true or not, what would you do as a council member to increase trust in county government?
I don't know that I would agree with the trust thing because I, I think that people get caught up in a, and I'm guilty of it myself. And I don't wanna use, the first term that comes to mind is a little bit of a mob mentality. Um, this, this, I hate the government is, seems to be a trend in America nationwide and locally and everything. Um, these are citizens, these are, these are, these are, uh, public servants. I hope to be one here, uh, next week, elected, um, that are, that I think are sincerely doing the best they can, you know, and, and it's so, this, this whole trust thing, I, I don't completely buy into that. That there's a, there's a, there's a lack of, but that doesn't mean that people aren't frustrated. Now, your question is what can we do? Well, it, it goes back to the, the, it goes back to communication, which I've spoke of already, you know. I mean, each, each council member, um, needs to reach out. I mean, they're, 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 the, 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 the politicians that keep getting reelected throughout history, wherever, you'll find that they probably have a pretty good record of communicating with their citizens, their constituents. People want to be recognized for that. I could talk to a citizen or maybe a mayor of a city or whatever and, and sit at a council meeting or whatever and, and say, hey, listen, here's what you guys want and here's what we can do, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do. People like that. Because it's, okay, I get it now. Uh, it, it's gotta be communication. Um, if, if that's the question you're asking, how can we fix it? If it's a problem, let's fix it. And reaching out to the citizens is the best way and not just the citizens, but the, the, the local governments. As, as you alluded to before, there's, I mean, it starts there. If, if there's a perception that, for example, the city of Deltona, where I'm running for the fifth district is got, is at odds with the county, that's gonna trickle right down through the citizens. They may not know anything about it. They're gonna say, ah, that county's not getting along with Deltona. They're causing trouble, you know? We gotta squash that.
Okay. So we've, I have more questions, but we've kind of run out, we've sort of run out of time.
You got any good ones? Give me, give me a softball. These are all tough questions.
So we've, we've reached the end of my questions and as we would in a debate, I wanna just give you a couple of minutes to talk about whatever you wanna talk about as a closing statement.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Thanks for this meeting, by the way. And I wanna say for the record, anybody watching this, this was very generous of the News Journal to do this. Pat has tried to, to facilitate a debate, which I, quite frankly, I've watched your debates. I think you handled them great and I was looking forward to it. Uh, my opponent didn't wanna debate and I'm gonna put that out here right now. He has dodged me. I've taken the high road. I've been, been really cool about this because I don't wanna be that guy who, who bellyaches over this. But we had a debate scheduled for the sixteenth. He had a family issue that came up. I respect that. I don't wanna, you know, I, my, my sister just passed away a couple of months ago. A resident of Deltona, fifty-six years old, lost a battle with cancer. I was, wasn't during a debate time, but I understand that. Um, so, but at the same time, uh, it's appeared to be somewhat convenient for him. Uh, he is the incumbent. He's got name recognition. He's got the backstory. Quite frankly, he should have slaughtered me in a debate. He's got the inside information. If I was in his position, I'd wanna debate someone coming up because I could crush them on what they don't know, right? He's in there. So he has dodged me in a debate and, um, and so now, thank you to Pat Rice and the News Journal for giving me a little time here. Now, why do I want you to elect me? I grew up in southwest Volusia. I'm fifty years old. I just turned fifty a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I'm a blue collar worker. That's been my, that's been my, you know, that's been my platform. Uh, I, I wanna represent. I want there to be a voice at the Volusia County Dais that when anything comes up, a lot of the issues are mundane or just whatever, day-to-day stuff, the county manager and staff's gonna handle. I get that. Give out an award or something like that. But when it comes to the meat potatoes, the issues that affect the people of Volusia County, especially my district, the fifth district, which is blue collar to the bone, Deltona, ninety-five to ninety-eight percent blue collar. They get in their car every day and drive down I four to a job. I want there to be a voice to represent them. I want them to say, there's somebody up there that's got up in the morning, put on his blue jeans and his boots and went to a job site to make a living for their family. I'm that guy. Um, and I want you guys to give me a chance. Give me a shot at it. And then if I get elected in four years, you know, look at me then and then judge me. Uh, my, my opponent, he's the incumbent, um, doesn't wanna debate, uh, got himself a, you know, we're gonna, this is gonna be decided next week, Pat. This is not going in November. This primary's got, for all intents and purposes, two candidates. There is a third candidate who's not running for office. And thank you for pointing that out in the, if you wrote that article yesterday, didn't?
I did not.
Well, whoever pointed, whoever wrote that lovely article in the News Journal yesterday pointed that out. Um, there's three people running in the District Five race. That's what forced the primary. So historically, one-eighth of the voters are gonna show up. I think that's what the numbers show. So it's a very, uh, convenient way for an incumbent, uh, to get reelected. So, um, anybody listening to this thing right now, I'm Dan Hunt. I need your vote. August twenty-eighth.
All right. Dan, thanks very much.
Thanks, Pat. Thank you.
I appreciate it. And, uh, that concludes, uh, our session with Dan Hunt.